Yesterday, so done today's little sort of.
At 1:00 P. M. Before we get started, I just want to speak to the class of Chief Brent last week and the loss to our community. And from Mayor, Council and staff, we are thinking of Vivian, their family and friends. And we know that there are plans in the work for the service and we will share more of that when we find out more, but our thoughts go out to Vivian and the family. Okay, we're going to approve the agenda recommendation, the committee of the whole meeting agenda for August the 27th, 2025 be approved as circulated. Counselor Rich, Counselor Bailey, all in favor? Thank you. Adoption of the minutes recommendation at the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting held on July the 23rd, 2025 be adopted. Counselor Bushel, Counselor Beach, all in favor? Thank you. We don't have any delegations. We do, we are going to start with department updates. Daryl, we haven't seen you for a while, so we're super excited that you're here.
Hey, great.
Hey, take it away.
Thanks. So yeah, I've got a few slides.
Oh, good. We love those.
High level, we've been through some stuff here. We've had a busy summer. It's been wet and it's been challenging. We've found this to be mostly moist reality this year. So the mowing has been reflective. Yes, it's been into that and the weeds. And. Well, first. Did you do that?
Being weird today.
It's being weird. Okay, so just high level, the operations crew's been in seven feet all summer. Maybe smashing it won't work. Yeah. I wonder if I should do it.
Felt better.
Clicker's not working.
Yes.
So yeah, we've done 21 cycles of mowing. So just to put that in context, I think we ended the year last year around 22 cycles. We're a long way from done. It's just been wet and now it's getting hot again. We'll be going for a while. We'll probably break 25 cycles here. Of the itch flailing on the highways, we've done that four times. We'll have to do that again. It's hairy every time you look. Number of planters and plotter beds were on that, for water maintenance. Guys are up doing road repair, potholes once a week. We're doing some shoulder and work. We were up there this morning doing some shoulder and work by crossing the 711. Lots of sign installation replacement. We've had a year for signs. Facility maintenance at plants. It's been busy fleet and equipment maintenance. And then obviously with the storm July, I think on the 16th, we have lots of tree work this year. So it's happened. Utility crew equally busy five days a week. We've got somebody on the call through the weekends as per usual. They've done about 40 kilometers of water main flushing. It's completed. Gone through our hydrant inspection. Remember, we do have that amount in actual teardowns. So that's ongoing right now. Whole bunch of sampling this year, over 200 additional, well, the majority of the 200 are additional samples that we're taking for the ministry, trying to find a direction and see what we have to do with the plant. So that's, you know, river influence, ethylene, the water sampling carrying on as usual from the river and the beaches, byproducts to the distribution lines, facility maintenance for those guys as well. Lots of locates this year with construction happening. Just near the end of repairs. What guys up the field, I'm going to just kind of switch to a little verbal here now, just high level. Some of the projects that we've completed this year have been the creation of the small dog park with the information boards that came before council. Those are all installed. We've kind of parlayed that project to put in a kayak launch. So that's all really well signed. So thanks to Cher and Captain for a great job on the signage. Our paving got completed, our big stretches of Cedar Street complete and Oak Avenue and a variety of patches throughout town. So that got done this summer. We've converted two locations by the waterfront for car parking where the bus bistro was and across the street from there. Then we established the truck and trailer parking at Pennington Place. So that was probably the most stressful thing for me going into the summer is how is the parking going to work? And I think we did really well. So they were well utilized and I didn't get a lot of negative feedback. So that was good. Staff undertook some major lining repairs at our wastewater plant. So in our drying bed, we had a whole bunch of seams that were coming apart after we cleaned up the drying bed. Probably 25, 28 years old at that drying bed and just the rubber was splitting all over the place. So it's really a good news item because the cost you scrambled to get ranged anywhere from 150,000 to 350,000 to fix that. And it was something that was just kind of discovered as we were doing a big cleanup in there. So our guys all jumped in ops and utilities prepped everything and we got somebody to come in and just kind of weld that rubber back together for under 20,000. So a really big win. We've been working closely with Akon, a couple of major projects with the water mains going across the highway. One from Gil to Silver Sands to complete the looping and another one over by Brun Road. So those were a couple of late nights, but all hands on deck for utilities and that went pretty smoothly. You'll see a little building on the north side of the highways across the bridge. That's our PRB station, pressure reducing valve. There's a little building around it. That got moved down below. So we've been working with them, getting everything where we need it to be. And it's working fine. We've got a number of projects that are just on the launch pad right now. That's for one would be Riverside Water Main. So we're going to be replacing that water main and upsizing it from a six inch A.C. It's 55 years old. We're going to be putting a 10 inch PVC line in there. With that is a full 270 meters of water line, curb gutter, concrete sidewalk, storm works. Yeah. So the road will be fully restored when we're done that. So that'll go from Martin to Temple. And they'll be mobilizing probably Friday and wanting to get going, get going right after the long weekend. So that's coming soon. Otis's are going out this week individually. And I know we've done some social stuff on it too. And the contractor is committed to, to keeping things accessible for the businesses there. Also coming very soon, end of September, we're going to get the young station upgrade done. So that'll be, that'll be the utility crew, probably working at night, trying to get all the, the logic control put in. We've got our water treatment plant, the train one membranes will be replaced. You know, we talked about it at the budget meeting. Trains that are 48 sats each, they're like big hot tub filters. We're going to build out to 60 in each train. So it's just a reallocation of what exists in train one now. And we'll be replacing the full second stage, which is our dirty water. So train one replacement coming and that'll be September 30th. They're going to mobilize and get down here and it'll probably take four days. We've taken possession of two hypochlorine pumps. So we make our own chlorine for the water, do it in the plant. Those old Perry flow pumps are 25 years plus. So they, they don't owe us anything. This was a budget item that got approved. The pumps are in, so we're going to be rebuilding that skid here in the next few weeks. So that'll all be pumped in essentially. We will have these upgrades of the water stream plant, moving our day, our daily capacity from eight meg liters, eight million liters to potentially 10.2. So everything will run low and slow. Not like we're pressed to make more water, but it's just a really good idea to keep everything running smoothly. So that's coming soon. And pump track lighting, we've got that all lined up. It's starting to slow down a little bit now. So we're going to be putting in four, I believe, four or five street lights. I just don't recall. I think, I think it's four strategically throughout the pump track area. So and then we'll throw that on timers. We're pursuing an outdoor ice rink right now. So we, we have, we'll have some discussion about that a little bit. We're gearing up to do some landscape improvements at the healing center. That'll come in a bit of, in a few stages. Just an intermediate step right now, we want to get some blue certified crushed rock along the perimeter with some planters to make, just to kind of dress it up. And then what we do on the inside, we can have some discussion and figure that out. Reskinning of the sand shed is coming, expansion of the salt shed is coming. We're doing that one in-house. And then just some of the challenges this summer, obviously stemmed from the wet weather, really had an impact on our grass and weeds. Big population numbers. So the metrics we use, there's, there's no perfect science, but we watch the water going out and the influence coming into the plant. It was busy here this year, like, like I've never seen. So big numbers stressed our systems a little bit in different ways. Half year vandalism, we saw all kinds of stuff around town this year, really tricky. Bathroom seemed to be a target, really hard to put cameras in bathrooms. But it was, it was more widespread than that. And then you throw in the, the storm of July 16th, we had three weeks of cleanup and tree work. On a half year note, Ben and Cody both got married, got to each other, but they've been. So good on both of those guys. Nathan, our new operator in training passed his level one water distribution. And that was just last week, high mark in the class. So we're really encouraged with that. Yeah. So on a smooth road, and this is just the projects that we were working on. That's the liner that we had to expose and get prepped for them to come in the wells. Steve there with the shovel, he's exposing all that stuff. So in the bridge, not really a lot of interaction on this particular storm exercise, but just the scope of it's just so impressive to just watch this stuff go on and be part of that. This is probably the, the biggest news item of the summer, I'll say. This is, this is our phase one for the Alhead Mountain Bike Trail. The green shows the up track. And so I've got a cool little video I want to share with you guys who could save you pedaling up the hill. So.
Perfect.
It's, what are my numbers? If the up track is 2.8 kilometers, it's five to six percent grade. So it's really quite smooth. And then coming down is 1.2 kilometers. It's a blue because just like skiing, it's the blue squares intermediate. Yeah, they get moving on that thing. And it's about 12% coming down. So really, really cool. They were trying to employ these, this kind of emphasis when they're building it. They wanted to make sure that the rates would be sustainable. We weren't going to wash out. They did a lot of armoring, erosion control. There's some rock benches, drainage tips, there's burrs. They want to put in some other cool things when, when time and resources allow, we can enhance that trail a little bit. Not the lights doing that. Yeah. So as I mentioned, 4.2 kilometers of trail have been built. I guess the good news item on this slide is the cost per meter. When we went into this project, we, they didn't know. They said that there's pretty narrow seams of soil to work with. It could be a lot of imp, or we're going to allow it somewhere between 25 and 45 dollars a meter. They, they made the money go a long way. And if you recall, we had that Pacific Hand Grant paid for two thirds. So we did really well. So. Yeah, super exciting. That last mine has to do with a little, a little kiosk that we were expecting and it just came in. So that's it there. There's going to be some consultation with Svechnik to see what they want to do about an interpretive center. And then see what we can do about developing a staging area, maybe some seeding. I'm hearing a bike wash is a popular thing for invasive weeds that can spread by the riders in different places. So you can look at all that stuff. We'll get it all in. We have, we've had some interest in doing some, getting some pictographs on the rocks on the trail. So if Svechnik wants to put pictographs, that might be a really cool feature as well in terms of subsidence or whatever. So we'll hear them out and weigh it out and see what we can do. We're currently monitoring the trail. That storm was our first foray going up there and clearing trees because we had some come down. But yeah, we're continuing for phase two. Phase two is like world domination. It's really cool. Mind this, this blue down here is what we, this is our 4.2 kilometers. So next thing we're looking at is getting up higher. Once we get up higher, we have all kinds of potential to come down. So we want to for sure get to the 2.5 parking lot and even higher from there eventually. And this potentially could, could span right across. So it'd be very, very cool. So it's great to have an up track and a down track functioning though. I'm getting lots of good feedback. But I would suggest we get three, four, five trails. It's going to put us on the map. Super. Okay, Alhead. I'm not sure.
Yeah, we missed you.
Oh.
Yes.
Computer's being really weird. On here.
Maybe give it another smack.
Or toss.
Oh, it's working now. Yes. Should be embedded in there.
I can vote for that. It definitely was embedded.
It was embedded.
Yes.
Sure.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay.
I gotta keep going. You can bind it.
Give me a minute. Okay, this YouTube.
Remember?
Yes, I do. If you just Google Alhead Mountain, mountain bike trail and then go to videos. Should be able to pick it up. Videos up top. You there? You know, what was it called, Daryl?
Most of that.
Or go right on YouTube, Bianca, if you have time quickly.
It's worth seeing. It's.
It is. I know. That's why. Find it. Good. Like the title of it, we created the videos called like big bald head or something.
Yeah, something. There it is. No, that's not.
That one, that one, here you go.
Thanks, Bianca.
So I will then.
Oh.
Friends of War Dogs.
That looks so narrow.
This is where friends of war dogs comes down on this wind round here and it's a lens. And training starts here. Purposeful time drills, which I saw with. They've done a good job so far with thinking about drainage. Being close to where you can kind of cross. These four dogs and skip some of the time. So this is where those four dogs stand right here. I don't know. See the chest.
Deeper breaths. He's taking deeper breaths. Really following around.
This is very here. To Palm House. To the cut block. Trying to stand highways out left as this goes. This is the inventory line. And traverse. Order of words. Now he's going to start the descent.
Oh, God.
This is. Those are dogs.
Geez.
Daryl there.
He stops talking and hangs on.
Fight and treat a little bit. If you want to miss that turn. That's our trail.
Oh.
Nice.
Wow.
That's pretty cool. That could be crazy.
I get some of those fairy riders over there.
The young man's sport.
That's a really young man.
Makes me different demographic.
Very specific demographic here.
So Daryl, are you done?
No, just about. So I'm going to just pull through this really quick. So like I said, train one, we're going to be replacing second stage. And just reallocating those membranes in the plant. That's what the trains look like. Our parking got really well used in Finnison this year. Drying bed repairs we talked about until we had all, all hands on deck. This is how this, these seams all came apart all over the place. So that was our challenge this year. Signage looks great. That's the beach that the trail leads to for the kayak. A little bit aftermath from the storm. And just in case you don't know, this, this little lantern project is complete. It's been put up at the top of the lookout. Beachfront bathroom. It's wired. There's lights. I've spoken with the artist. He just needs to come back and program it. So we're going to get, that'll be lit up one night soon. Yeah. And that was just a few things. It was a busy summer for everybody, but I still found time to, oh yeah, we're going to talk about this right after. This is just to do with Scott, we're posing for the outdoor rink and a little stage area. I mean, found time to make my first loaf of sourdough bread. That looks really. Great. I was really afraid somebody might break in and steal it.
That is.
Good job.
Thank you, Daryl. So Rich.
Through the chair. Thank you, Daryl. Yeah, it's been a challenging year, but you know what? Town looks great. And like you say, parking's working great. The ballparks look great, like actually everything. And I'm going through the same wet, dry thing at my place and I, I understand the, the pain of that. Um, one question with Alhead, you said, you know, we're, we got this new dream. Are we going to have to go through the six year process with the government to get, we can just build whatever we want now?
True. Well, not quite. We've done all the heavy lifting. And so everybody we've been working with, including the province, made it very clear that once, once we get the first one established, the, the phases coming afterward will just be, it'll just be a review process.
Well, that's huge. That's fabulous news. Okay. Thank you for everything this year.
Yeah.
Pam.
Sweet. Oh, yeah. I just, what I wanted to ask was, was would it, would we value as a council, keeping track of, of attendance to these, to these features that are being built? Is there any value? Cause you can get people counters to put on trails and stuff. And I just ran into something at, I think it must've been Silga. And just, and it, and it could work on other places, but also on the bowl here, but I'm not sure what the advantage of that would be. Would it be an advantage to getting funding or I, I don't know. I just wanted to bring that up, but I also want to say that that was really scary. And I watched, I've watched videos of my own grandson coming downhill on his bike and just about died. So I'm glad that wasn't my grandson, but.
He's going to love it.
It's crazy. It's just crazy.
I think the user group or organizers, I don't think it's a council decision to count it. That's going to be recreation or those guys over there that can take care of that and find out use and how well it's going. And that's probably more your wheelhouse than our responsibility as council. Go ahead, Counselor Bailey.
Just, just to say thank you. I think this is, was an amazing presentation. I, I noticed all the grass cutting this year and I was like, oh, that's going to be a lot more than usual. Didn't know it was that much more. So it's incredible that you got through the amount of stuff that you did. And thank you to you and your team for, for doing that. The weather was perfect for not having forest fires, but not so perfect for the maintenance folks. But anyways, thanks again.
Yeah, I'll pass that on. Thank you.
Counselor Bushel.
Yes, through the chair. Daryl, great presentation and thanks for you and your team and everybody for putting fire lady had all summer long, even though you didn't have any fires. You had the windstorm and everything, but no, the bike park is amazing. Yeah. The, the video doesn't do us justice. It's a lot wider than it actually looked. Bill video. So it looked like you're up in the flat, but you're actually going up straight. So it doesn't give you any justice. But anyways, yeah, the bike park's pretty cool. We did come up a little short on some gravel and I did talk to Darren Northway and he said he'd helped participate. Yeah. So it's, it's really nice. And even if you don't have a chance to, you don't want to go for a bike ride down it. It's even a nice way to just walk up the hill. It's so, it's just flat. It's really flat all the way.
Yeah.
No track across it for the bed though.
It's great. Yeah. And easy to pedal up too. So yeah, no, it's, it's pretty neat.
Excellent. Counselor. Excellent. Counsel McKay.
Yeah, no, good, good job in the on the trails and uh. Good job in the parking, especially the signing for the parking. I think that was very well done for the signing and organizing, driving around an August-long weekend, you know, one of our busiest uh. Didn't see any congestion anywhere, and it was very well coordinated.
Yeah, Captain and and Sheriff played major role in this in the signage, so. Well done.
Thanks, Daryl. I just have a couple of comments. Um, the parking worked so well, and there was, it wasn't like always packed. There was plenty of parking around town, so.
Yeah.
Um, it, you know, I think we got spooked by the amount of of uh, parking that we lost at the bridge. And, you know, people found other other spaces. They found paid parking. They just moved and Finlayson uh place was brilliant, and it wasn't always packed. We did have a bit of uh, a few people that were camping there overnight. So but and I'm assuming we're gonna try and move that to paid parking moving forward. So um, no, I think that was, that was great, and it it worked out really well. Um, the Riverside project, the Water Main. Um, that starts after the September-long weekend. And those folks on Riverside have all been notified because that's busy season for them to start pulling those boats out, servicing them and running up and down that street. So they're all good with that.
Yes.
That's perfect. Thank you. Um, the Health Center Gardens, uh, Gavin uh, Bo was very interested in helping with that project. If we could reach out to him, he's got some great ideas as well as Deb. So um, just wanna mention that. You know, um. Just to the bike track there, is there an opportunity? And we've had people in town that um, Ed Dev's doing a brilliant job. And we do have someone looking at perhaps bringing some bikes to town and as a bike store. Uh, one of their questions was, is there opportunity at the bottom of Owl's Head to make a, like a pump track, but dirt? Like, is there space for that? You don't have to answer it now, but that was one of their questions. They were so impressed with the pump track that they're looking to expand that market a little bit as well. So just food for thought for now. Um, vandalism is is concerning. Um, you're putting that fire lantern up at the beach park where it's easy access. So is there, and counsel, maybe just a bit of brainstorm, is there something that we can do? Do we need a communication now regarding vandalism and the cost to taxpayers? And, you know, um, and our community and our community pride? And I don't know, is is there something that we should be reaching out to community with regarding vandalism and see if there's ways that we can persuade kids from not, like take a sense of pride, pride? Um, I'm not sure. Was it out-of-towners or was it locals that are doing the vandalizing? Do we know that?
We don't know with certainty, but I think just as we saw our influx of of busyness here, that's when the vandalism was really bad. And so this week has actually been a little bit better.
So, yeah, so maybe there's a communication piece we can add. Counsel Rich.
Uh, through the chair, with the Water Main, it was on the radio. That's how I heard about it. So again, whoever's doing the communications, uh, it was actually on um. I don't, I don't know what the radio station's called anymore in San Diego, but the the one from forty years ago, but the same one. But they actually had a clip that it was starting and it was going. So I don't, I'm not sure if that was you, Captain, or or Cheryl or whoever, but it actually, that's where I found out about it. And again, I I feel like that's being communicated really well and appreciated. Um, and I think, actually, the mayor and I, we talked about cameras, and we've looked at cameras, and there was a grant for cameras. Um, unfortunately. I feel like Big Brother is the way around this. I think the people that are gonna vandalize it, they're, you know, a kid's not gonna look at social media and go, oh, that's gonna cost X dollars of, or an adult. Blame the kids.
Parents, their parents may maybe.
Yeah, I don't know. But, you know, I I do think investing in cameras, and I know it's hard to maintain, and there's a freedom of information and all those those different things. But um, I know in other communities, I was talking to a friend of mine who's um, on council in South Surrey, and and cameras seem to be the way to go. Um, and and that's a deterrent, like not actually using it always to prosecute. But then when someone goes to maybe make a mistake, they look up and they go, eh, there's a camera here, maybe I'm not gonna make that choice. So um, we'd looked at those cameras that had the grant last year.
If or at U B C M or.
Yeah, it was last year at U B C M. So I don't know if that's still, and it it's a budget, and I know, I I understand all that. But we maybe need to weigh what we're spending in um fixing stuff up and and uh cost of having the camera.
And to your point, Counsel Rich, um, Captain's doing a brilliant job with all of her communications. Like, she is really reaching out and messaging is really, really good. So Captain, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, anyone else? Counsel Beach.
Yeah, through the chair. I'm I'm just feeling like um, the important, one of the important pieces would be to make sure that it is well-publicized in the community that we are having these problems. Because then I feel that the community that are in the areas and using these places are are they're just, they're gonna help us, right? They're gonna keep an eye out. So.
Absolutely. Yeah, so maybe some communications are. Counsel Bushel.
Yes, through the chair. Uh, Daryl, while while calling brought it to our attention. I have it on my counselor's report, but we um, um. There's a group of us, Deb and uh, Deb Heap and Brian Anderson and Gavin and myself and uh, Richard. Uh, we approached one of the business owners on Main Street to see if we could just do a little uh tidying up of their place.
Nice.
See how long it would take and just, you know, just kinda tidy it up. So we picked uh Dave Stern's place next door. Because the weeds were coming up through the bricks and all that stuff, and it was just kinda looking a little bit tap. And we haven't got even started in the back yet. But anyways, we started, we, it only took an hour. It was like an hour and fifteen or ten minutes in the morning. We started five thirty or, yeah, five thirty. And uh, we were.
Need sleep, I guess.
Tidy it up. And and we're not done yet. We still got a little bit of work to do. But we're trying to uh, what we're trying to do is just encourage other places on Main Street to just step it up a little bit. And just, it's the weed thing. And the weeds get out of control, and you can, they're hard, but it doesn't take much if you stay on top of them. So we did that. And then we also looked at, um, and Gavin has a really good eye for with landscaping. So don't be afraid to, you know, it'd be really good if you could reach out to him about the medical center. And he knows you got the what color rock, and he's he's got all kinds of ideas about grasses and stuff like that. So I think if you uh, work with them, it would, you know, even just have him there, and he'd he'd help, or he'd even, you know, assist.
He offered to help.
Yeah, um, and then one other thing we noticed on the walk too is that when you walk into the, and it might not be done yet too. When you walk into the medical center, there's three steps, but there is no handrails on those three steps. But if you go to the left, then there's from, it's about twen- twenty feet of railing that's kind of not there. It probably shouldn't be there. It's pretty uh, it's it's like a three and a three-foot draw. But it's uh, it's kinda open. It faces the street. So it's just something to 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 look at that, you know, whether the, whether it should be added later. But it's just a little bit of a drop and it made like somebody, you know, somebody fall off there.
Counsel official. Okay. Daryl, thank you so much for all you do and your team. Brilliant job this summer. We all appreciate it so much. Thank you. Okay, uh, moving right along, we are going to Finlayson Park Playground Replacement Update. Bianca.
I'm gonna take this one little last minute.
Captain.
Will, I know. Um, I'd like to start off by thanking Cara so much. She's our intern here at the district. She's gonna be with us for the year. And she wrote the staff report, did a great job. So thank you to her for taking a look at our survey results. So today, this is on the agenda because we wanted to provide an update on the results of the Finlayson Park Playground Replacement Survey and provide a quick update on next steps. So this visual representation of the results kind of pulls out some of those responses from the survey. And we actually had a hundred and six participants, which is great for our community. We also hosted a public engagement event at the playground. Bianca was very involved in it, as was Cheryl Lee and Cara, and we actually got to get some in-person feedback as well. So we wanted to make this a fun visual representation of the results and just pull out some of those key stats that are gonna help shape what the future of the playground looks like. So if anybody has any questions about the results, feel free to ask. And then as far as next steps go, we're looking at putting out an R F P based on the feedback received in this survey with a proposed timeline of having the R F P open between September and October. And upgrades anticipated to commence in early, early spring of twenty twenty-six with a main focus on disrupting the use of the playground as little as possible while we make the transition to that new equipment.
Thank you. Counsel questions. Counsel Rich.
Um, through the chair, uh, what's gonna happen with the old equipment?
I don't think that there's been a conversation about that yet.
Can we, can we still use it someplace, or is it just toast, or we don't know yet?
I don't know yet. Uh, no plans for it yet. I I know uh, Counselor Robinson expressed interest in the in the preschool one, or the the daycare one, but that went, that went to the elementary school.
They're working on it.
It's out of our yard now, so they're.
It's this September.
So just a quick question, if we're changing this out, is it because of safety outdated? Like, so if it's safety, then we probably shouldn't be moving it, like.
Fair enough, yeah.
Yeah.
I think, I think there's components of this whole playground that need to be just removed because they're dangerous.
Yeah.
For the most part, I think it's just, it's aged. It's just.
Counsel McKay.
Well, that was, thank you. That was sort of my question too. I mean, when I was reading this, there was said, we're replacing this because of best practices, not because it's rusted out or or dangerous, but just best practices, like um. The the only thing in in report that I thought maybe we should do is is put a rubber mat on the ground. And because that seemed to be the consensus in the survey, but what's wrong with the playground? Why are we replacing it?
Captain.
I would defer to Cher. She's gone.
Okay.
Thank you.
Get you up to the podium, please, Sarah. Thank you.
So according to uh, the Canadian Playground Safety Institution, as well as Canadian Standards Association. Um, they put a typical life cycle of a playground that fifteen to twenty years. Um, this one's currently twenty-seven years. Um, some of those reasons are um metal, the integrity of metal technically breaks down between fifteen and twenty years. Um, plastic can break down between ten and fifteen. It's always not, it's not always the visual. So um. We would have to do a bunch of testing and stuff to see if it is still in good shape. Um, as well, another thing to consider is C S A standards change frequently with playgrounds. So a lot of the aspects of this playground don't really even fall under C S A standards anymore. Um, although typically those things are grandfathered in until an incident happens. So as soon as there's an incident, um, an incident that involves child, they're gonna wonder why we didn't look at it at that point. Follow what they call best practice.
Thank you. Thank you. That makes, that makes sense as to the replacement. Counsel Bailey.
Yeah, um, I just. I see that we have a hundred thousand dollars allocated to it, but correct me if I'm wrong here, but I understanding is that these, these can be really expensive. Like, is that, is that anywhere near, or are we just gonna go with the R R P and then figure it out later? But I mean, that seems a little low from my understanding when it comes to these play playgrounds, especially with rubber, like a rubber mat, those become quite pricey.
The rubber matting, um, through the chair, is actually one where we can um, get grant funding for. Because of the accessibility element. Right now, this playground is not accessible.
Right.
For and for children in wheelchairs, even you know, mum bringing a wagon and a stroller, you can't really get around the playground. I mean, we did have some, um, not really on our online survey, but that actually came to the playground that actually kind of liked the rock. But you you just don't get the accessibility element with it.
Right.
Which people are going through. And one thing with the rock too is um, you really have to, let us through shares. You need to make sure that you maintain it at surface with the rock and and um, maintain it for head tests bouncing off the ground. So um, yeah, so if we get that um accessibility element, there's grant funding through B C Hydro and a few others um, for accessibility. And then also, um, the report said a lot of interest in trying to incorporate the trees in with the play area. Um, maybe expand the um fencing in into that area. This playground is used a lot during the week with our playgroups in town. The preschool goes here, the um Eagle Valley Community Support Society runs um playgroups here. My son is very active at this playground at this point, really enjoys the playgroup, so keeping that in mind. But, yeah, we have a lot of, a lot of users at this.
Yeah, I'm not questioning that. I'm just wondering if this is something that we need to flip over into budget discussion too, because.
It will be.
It seems like a hundred grand is just probably not gonna do much. But I I don't know.
Like, what was there?
Yeah, so the beach park was the last one we did.
Yeah.
And I wanna say that one came in around seventy.
Yeah.
Yeah. And there's some sales too. Those are, our structure is pretty simple.
Right.
Um, and also, we didn't get a lot of feedback for additional structures, like this structure is beloved.
Okay.
Other than the steep stairs and the slide kind of angling off weird. There, there wasn't many added components that we want. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Bushel and Counsel Rich.
Yes, sure. I like, I like the report and all the information you got from it. It's really, really, really good. Um, I just had, I hate me inventing the wheel, you know, um, the C S R D, they put these all kinds of parks. And they've done lots of uh, you know, lots of campground replacements over the, or not campgrounds.
Playground.
Playground replacements over the years. It would be good to just, you know, reach out to them and, you know, just see if you can get any pointers from them as well. And then, of course, uh, you know, we should have a recreation department involved in it too. So I just, you know, I just think that, you know, if you ask, you know, everybody, it it really helps out. And I think the C S R D, like they did, just did one in Malacca, and I did, they did one over in Blind Bay. You see them popping out all over the place. So they got a lot of experience, and maybe they have some good ideas or contacts.
Counsel Rich.
Through the chair. Yeah, my only thing that I would say to be cognizant of, I was at a playground not very long ago here this summer, and they did the rubber matting in black. And when we hit forty-four, it's, I'd be cooking babies. It would, I, they they do come in beige, and I would be uh, really cognizant of that. Because if we've got a lot of these companies that are coming out of the States and off the coast, and they don't have our heat. Um, so that when we do put our rubber matting, which I absolutely love, that we do something in a really nice light color.
Yeah. Sure, quickly, Jamie.
Because some of the big kingdom daycare center actually showed me, I'm not sure if it's from Africa. I dragged it into the one biggest uh, that they have done at the daycare is not within the rubberized floor. They are constantly wetting it down. It's too hot for the kids to play on. It's burning them. So she wanted to make sure that somebody from council knew that, that they, if they had to do again hindsight twenty twenty, they would not go with the rubberized, at least for the full surface. So then, no, there are still lots of spots for the kids to play at one from them. And I have diamond flex matting on my personal deck at home, which is hundred percent sunlight, or this playground is. You cannot walk on that deck without your, without shoes on, otherwise you're permanent. So just wanted to bring that to council's attention.
Good point.
Thank you, Jamie. Captain.
I guess one more comment in terms of the rubber matting and it just being hot on the playground. A big sentiment that came out of this was also a desire for shaded areas. So in our research, we found some pretty cool shade tarps that can be installed as part of the playground, like on posts. Um, and also the angle of the playground equipment, making sure that any flat slides aren't facing where there's direct sun when most users are there. There are a lot of those considerations that will have to be made and will be made as a result of this feedback we've gathered. And of course, with significant user groups like the daycare or the C S R D, we'll continue those conversations to make sure that all the perspectives are considered when when decisions are being made about the R F P and criteria. Yeah.
Okay, anything else, Captain?
That's it for me.
Hey, thank you so much. Okay, we're going to the strategic priority uh, fund grant. Uh, Finlayson Park Upgrades. There's a recommendation that committee, or that the committee directs staff to proceed with a grant application for the upgrade of Finlayson Park through the Strategic Priorities Fund Program. Counsel Rich. Do we have a Counsel Beach? Is there a secondary? Counsel Bushel, Bianca, do you want to speak to this?
Yeah. Well, it's probably between my visual and Daryl's. Um, so this is our proposed uh Finlayson Park Improvement Project for this grant. And it encompasses a few different things. So the big thing about the strategic priorities grant is it needs to be large in scale. And um, have a lot of, and um, has to fit one of the different categories, which one of them is recreation. So this one would be a recreation improvement. Um, so just zooming in. Um, so the proposed grant right now done up by staff would be um. Um, so the proposed grant right now done by staff would be, um, putting in a structure here which would encompass the outdoor rent covered, help with maintenance, everything like that. Um, year-round washrooms, a couple stalls for that, and also a covered staged area. So doing one structure covered here, it would give ample room. Here's where I'll bounce to. Daryl's lovely. So it would give enough room. Daryl has checked with, um, some of the softball people to make sure. So looking at diamond number one, um, this is kind of same distance as diamond number three, so we're getting enough clearance to put the structure here. Ice rink on one end, stage on the other end. Um, so that's one aspect. And then encompassing the redo of three ball fields. Knowing that we have, uh, RFP out for this ball field already. Um, diamond number three are fenced, fully fenced ball fields, getting lights. This is the main ball field to use, getting lights on this ball field. And then, um, as we've talked about before in council, right now, technically, our parking lot here and the modular accommodation facility is kind of landlocked. Um, in the wintertime, if this is cut off, which we do have access through, there's no statutory right of way coming from the mall. So really we're landlocked in the case of, you know, snow falling off through here. So why in this? To make it accessible for full-size vehicles. Um, it's really a large project. We're still, um, putting together what the total budget would be because we want this to be a hundred percent grant funded, which is allowed through this, um, strategic priorities fund. Um, and, and it will be quite large in scale. Um, just the ice rink alone, um, without the ground prep and everything is about, uh, three hundred thousand dollars. That's not including electrical upgrades and everything like that. So this will be a very large-scale grant application. Um, but it's okay because the total grant application allowed for this is seven million. So we'll try to encompass as much as we can and really make this a recreation hub. I mean, it already is a recreation hub. Um, but really, really getting it to a really good place. Um, without any questions?
Thank you. Councillor Rich.
Ah, through the chair. Bianca, is the skateboard park in there too? Like getting, topped up or moved or?
Right now, we don't have any proposed.
Okay.
Thank you for the skateboard park. I should note too, um, we're thinking, um, stage on here and storage in the back. So it can be used year-round, um, and it can get used by some of our rec users that need that storied, needed storage. Forgot that piece.
Yeah, just through the chair, I, I think that would be something that we should consider. Our skate park is really well-used and it is quite dated. So if we're looking, if they've got seven million bucks, we can fish out and we, we're doing a full, full makeover of the park. It would be something, um, that I would suggest we, we also put in there because the skate park is really well-used, but it's old. Pam, do you know what year it went in?
Um, tooth, took me four years to raise the money, so two thousand and four. Started in two thousand.
Thank you. Councillor Bushel and Councillor Bailey.
Yeah, through the chair, that, that's really a great project. I'd love to see it happen for sure. Um, just a couple of questions that we, we kind of touched on it, uh, quite a few meetings ago about the, uh, a museum. Have we had a, just, uh, anybody look at that building? And I know we're, um, you know, I know it's a storage facility right now, but is it ever going to be ever used for anything? Or is it just like, is it, is it a liability? And if it's a liability, it would be great to move that building to the big parking lot. Like if you could move it down to the big parking lot, it would be, uh, it would, you know, be right at the parking lot instead of walking through the grass to get to it. And the main parking lot. So that's just my thought. And it would be good to, you know, consult with all the user groups and, uh, and figure out, uh, you know, make sure we, you know, got everybody on board. Yeah, it's a great project. I'm excited about that.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it all, it really all comes down to the grant funding to see what we can or can't do. I like the idea. I'm not so worried about the skate park myself, but I was going to actually mention about the curling rink, whether that should be something we're talking about. I know there's some needed maintenance and other aspects of that complex that does have some needs, but, you know, I, I think that's something that you probably can find out as you go along into this process and the grant funding, but I was going to highlight that out. And the other one is, I'm really glad you mentioned about storage. That's something I, we hear a lot about is the lack of storage. And now that there's, there's a lack of, um, easy entry to the rec center because of the regulations around ammonia. Um, that would be definitely useful for, for our Eagles team, of course, because they say they come home sometimes and they can't get the rec center. So having a space for that would be, I think, ideal. Um, but yeah, this is, this would be great. And I don't know, who do we have to start bugging for money? I mean, I guess is really what the question is. But thanks for the staff to put the work into this as well and kind of reimagine it. I know we had a discussion last time about the importance of the rink and I think that's, I think it'd just be a very loved, uh, piece of recreation for the, for the community. So thanks, yeah.
Councillor McCabe.
Yeah, thank you. For the, for the outdoor rink, are you tapping into the ice plant from the rec center or would be a standalone ice plant? You, you looked at the pros and cons of tapping in there?
Yeah, um, having it standalone, then it's, you don't have to go into the ice rink, there's less regulations and everything. So just making it standalone, it's a lot easier, a lot cleaner. Um, and the units don't require significant amounts of electricity. They're just, there's totally, there's a totally different system.
It just.
Anyone else? It's a great project. Let's, yeah, let's, let's chase it. Let's go get it. Okay, thanks.
Questions?
I, yep, all in favor? And that's Carrie.
Thank you.
Um, Housing Committee, composition and committee members. Recommendation, oh, how about Captain, you start with this?
Sounds good. I'd love to. So I'm here to talk about the composition of the Housing Committee again. This might be a little bit familiar because the last time we spoke about this, we spoke about adding two more community members to the Housing Committee. And today, staff are bringing forward a recommendation that one more councillor be added to the Housing Committee. So the composition rests at half council members, half community members, and that we can proceed with this being a standing committee of, of council. So there's lots more background information in the report, but if there are any questions or discussion on who might want to be a part of that committee, I'll give it back to council.
Any questions, Councillor Bailey?
So I guess we would have then two standing committees. I think the other one's planning, development, and then housing.
Do we have another standing committee?
We, we don't, but yeah.
Go ahead, Captain.
It's interesting, and I went on a really big deep dive into committees, um, because our finance committee is called a select committee. And I believe that's because it's only during parts of the year during that budgeting process. And a big defining factor is that select committees debate one issue that will have like an end timeline, where standing committees are ongoing committees of council. If that makes sense.
Yeah.
But yes, PDC and the Housing Committee have both traditionally been standing committees.
Any other comments?
So, um, I guess the mandate of the Housing Committee, what's kind of, and, um, I look to the members here, I know why it got started. And I mean, we're still not out of the housing crisis, but, um, we've done quite a bit on, on what's kind of the next iteration we're looking at in terms of what we'd like it to accomplish kind of thing.
Councillor McCabe.
Well, we've done such a good job.
Oh, yeah.
Two, two meetings a month, two monthly meetings, two, uh, two meetings a year, to, uh, just, I think now an, an annual meeting once a year because, uh, we have, uh, we've purchased land and then we put that out for expression of interest and we've got, um, through that process, three different housing developments, well, two different housing develops going and, and then a private third one going. So, um, from no housing starts for forty-five years to three separate projects within the last two, three years. Um, I think we're in a pretty good position.
And I think with this committee, I think we just want to, we feel that we're going in the right direction. I think everyone feels like we're going in the right direction, but just to round out our term with one more year of this committee and then perhaps next year we look at it and decide if it's necessary or not to move it forward. Councillor Rich.
Through the chair and I, everything that Councillor McCabe has said. I think the other thing too that we're running into with the Housing Committee is we come up with stuff and then the provincial government mandates it. So we're like, oh, we're going to do this library, we're going to spend all this money on, on a, on a, um, small housing library. And then the, um, provincial government goes, hey, we're going to give you all this money to do this. We say, oh, hey, how do we, um, make it so people can put, uh, small units in their backyards? And then the provincial government comes out and says, everybody has to have a small unit in their backyard if they have to. So I think that's the other thing is absolutely, we should do another year, but um, the provincial government has taken huge steps towards housing and they trump everything we say. Um, so on certain things, we've been very proactive on. And then the provincial government just says, we're doing this anyways. And we've spent money on that. So I think that's something we need to, I, that's been a learning curve for me being on the Housing Committee. Um, especially with the, um, the library, like the plan library, right? And then it, it just, it's just now, it's out there. And the same with mandating, um, who can build where and how. And, you know, the provincial government has gone to, um, you can put six units on a single family um, lot anywhere in B C and you can't do much about it. That's, that's what it is. Um, so I think we just need to be really cognizant about that. And it's not, I, I think we've done a really good job. Um, I just feel like it's, we can do one more year. I think we just need to really think about it because the provincial government seems to always step in one step after we're, we, we think we're being proactive and then they're like, yeah, we're going to do this. So.
So I think that, um, I, I think that you guys have done a brilliant job and our community has done a brilliant job with this. And I think, just thinking back, this was one of those download things to, um, just local government, right? So we did, we took it, we did it. Councillor Rich, you're absolutely right. It's being so mandated now by the provincial. Let's just hand it back to them after next year and see what sort of rules and regulations. But at this point, I would like to nominate Pam Beach as the, um, third member of the Housing Committee. Councillor McCabe. Councillor Bailey, all in favor? And that's Carrie.
Congratulations, Pam.
Gee, thanks. I was going to volunteer, but.
Just it.
Okay, so now we're going to move on to special event, road closure. So Jamie, take this away.
Everybody through the chair, I'm just here today to, uh, provide a report for information. Um, at the beginning of the year, we received a lot of requests for different, uh, groups wanting to close our streets within the district of Cibon. So this has been an ongoing, uh, request throughout the years and we didn't really have any mechanisms in place. So working together with, um, Dean and Captain and a few other people, we put together what we call a special event road closure policy, number eight dash thirty-five. And what we did this year with it being the first year, um, we implemented a few different activities, a few different things to make sure that we were covering public safety and event organizers as well as a set of standardized application program process. Sorry, it's been a long week and it's only Wednesday. Um, impacts to traffic, our businesses, our residents, and then making sure that our emergency services are worked with so everybody's aware of the road closures, what were happening. And then being that this is the first year for a long time where we haven't had events on Main Street, hopefully, or against COVID. We went with extra mile, we made sure that we talked to our local businesses and that we made sure that we were listening to what they had to say and then give them the opportunity, once the events were done on Main Street, to provide the feedback. Um, what we found with the feedback that we've, uh, received is we, sounds like we hit the nail on the head with the policy that we put in place. And I don't have any recommendations at this time to make any amendments to that, uh, to that file or the policy. But what we did here is we created a main, I created a Main Street survey. I sent it out twice to our local business. It was then out on August eighth and then I sent out a reminder again on August the eleventh, so I had enough time to populate all the information that was given to us. Um, it was sending out fifteen businesses, uh, fifteen businesses that, um, received the email or received the survey. We read that response of eleven businesses were rate, return rate of seventy-three percent, which I mean, it sounds bad. In fact, we were more engaged and wanted to be able to provide a fair amount of feedback. We included seven very important questions, which are going to be covered in the next few slides. So of course, the first question is, is we wanted to know what type of businesses they were. So we put in the different categories of retail, restaurant, service-based, office professional, and other. Um, and as you can see, majority of the businesses were retail or restaurant-based businesses. The next question was, and what we did at this question is we allowed the, uh, the citizens to actually pick all that applied to them. So we didn't like a little off filter. That's why, because we wanted them to be what, uh, forthcoming as possible. And they surveyed, were anonymous, so that way we, it can give honest feedback. So we were going, oh, don't do that, because we expect the day. So as you can see that we had one customer, uh, my business claimed that, um, they had reduced customer traffic, they lost revenue. Um, there are some issues with staff arrival, departure issues, parking accessible, parking slash accessibility issues. But for the most part, seven of the eleven businesses did say that they did find that this was a positive impact to their business. Um, slide. The next question is, did we, did the events bring more customers to your business? We'd say two that say yes significantly, eight that say somewhat, one that reported negatively, um, as impacting. The following question was, did you take steps to adapt the road closure to events? And I thought this was an important for us to have this, to see if businesses were actually taking that, that, that part. We're closing the streets, you knew we're closing the streets, so what were you doing to attract those folks into your businesses? As you can see, three said yes, they did, eight did not. So that's, we'll just leave that as that. This is the big one here. Of the eleven surveyed, ten of them said that they would support future road closures. I think right there, that's, that's the baby, that's the big telltale for us, that we did do things right this year with everybody. So I take that as a very positive. And then what I did is I went into some more survey questions. So this one here was an optional. Says, were there any events hosted on Main Street in twenty twenty-five that you would prefer not to see returned? And if so, please explain why. The first one is, is the first car show, as we said, and we said right from the beginning that it has its own traction, that car show has been going on for a number of years. So we knew that the, the, um, the, what's the name, the increments would be, would be great because people have come to know that a lot that's like, which the last twenty-seven years that that car show is going on. It doesn't matter if it's a in the park or if it's on our Main Street, people are coming because it's an established car show. The second car show, it's only in its third year, it was brought back when we were trying to resurrect the Moose Mount date. I've since spoken with Gary Warchester, he also agrees that having two car shows in a span of three weeks is not, not, not productive. It's not benefiting him, he's not getting the return on investment that they want. So he is open to once next year comes and they have January, all of the car shows come out without the talk, no noggin. They will look at an alternative date later in the season. Preferably, I'd suggest that they link up with the Fungi Fest because we've already got these people in town. It's the off-season, it won't affect our business quite as much. And he's open to that suggestion. And then of course, we're looking at the count of the day as well. Would it be on a Wednesday next year? How do we make some, some changes to that? So the other one is, of course, the one business that we know is closing Main Street always reduces their cost of sale. So we know that that's, that's a potential because we do have some businesses that are completely landlocked and, and we recognize that. So the last survey question was, is what could the district do to different, or what could the district do differently when managing those locations to better support your businesses while still allowing community beds? So store public washrooms. Um, so this was, uh, a question that came up. And I just want to point out that typically, and I've done some surveys today, um, I've called a few of the surrounding communities to ask them what their things are. So if they're having car shows, they're having, um, where there, the, the fondos, things like that, and they're closing the road, that should be event organizers' responsibility to provide court bodies, not the municipality. So that'll be a, a, a conversation that we have with the event goers for the next year. Um, they'd like to see more vendors, more food trucks, more things like that to bring additional people to the event. So that is something that, again, I can work with those different groups to, to, I'm a hundred percent sure about the, the food truck part of that, but definitely different kind of vendors to maybe bring more people in. Um, take it easy on the music. That's not something that we can control, but that feedback that I can now provide to the organizers. The feedback that I got, like I said, the music was fine, but they were blaring it at eight o'clock in the morning and that everybody was ready to hear the roar of fifties and sixties at eight o'clock in the morning. And it was, you know, we do have people that actually still live on Main. And it was, you know, we do have people that actually still live on Main Street, so they wanted to sleep on on Saturday morning. And then, of course, a couple of them said use an alternate location. So continues on for the next page. Some of the other answers were still allow downtown businesses to be visible. Don't block of the site, out of sight, out of mind. I go back to, did you do anything to entice people to come into your businesses? Did you do a sidewalk? So that's right there. So that's something we can work with businesses in the future with the JAST. Um, the next one here, I have a pretty good idea of where this comes from. Um, so I'm gonna reach out to not only the car show group, but maybe to this particular business um and suggest that maybe they come up with a partnership. Maybe it's a day where they can work with Reds Rentals or RAP or something like that, that they can create a shuttle service where you you give them a phone call, say, hey, I'd like to get to not naming names, a business to pick up my, whatever it is I wanna pick up. There's a small fee that they pay. They pick them up, they drive, they pick them up on the parking lot, allow them shop and then take them back to their their parking lot or wherever their vehicle is located for the day. Just make sure that we're trying to see all, uh, not only our businesses be successful, but not have less visitors that are to our community. Better signage for optional road use. I think this more so comes down to for the car show especially, um, we count, I went down that morning, I counted fourteen vehicles that were still on Main Street parked from the day before. So we need to get a little bit better with having signage that are saying that the road's gonna be closed and then putting some measures in place. As if those vehicles will still park there in the next morning, that we have the ability to tow them because there'll be adequate signage saying that there is no overnight parking because we have an event coming on. Um, and then some things were thought that it was handled great. And then the last stage for the comments where um, they were fine with the measures, they didn't see any changes and they thought that the uh the new policy was handled, handled well. So I'm open to questions.
Thank you, Jamie, counsel. Counselor Rich, Counselor Bushel.
Through the chair, Jamie, I just wanna say thank you because this has been a big undertaking and and I know it's a super hot topic in our community and and people are very fired up on one side or the other. I actually made all three events. And I felt like it was, it was really well staged. It was well organized. Were there little blips and bumps? Uh, maybe, um, I actually, because I was on foot, popped in and and did more shopping than I usually would, where usually I I drive in, I do my whatever I need to do downtown and and I walked in down and I was looking at cars, both car shows and Canada Day. And I was like, all right, I'm already down here. I'm gonna pop in here and look for that. So I think it was like really well done and yeah, overall fabulous. So thank you for all your work on that.
Counselor Bushel.
That's through the chair. Good work, Jamie. Um, finding out all this information because there is a little bit of a hot topic. Um, I did meet with the uh with the car show group, um, the larger car show group after their first car show. And yeah, they come up with all kinds of ideas and suggestions and one of the ones they wanted, like you say, they want, you know, uh, washrooms. Or porta potties or a couple hundred bucks plus a pump out, I think it is. I can't remember. And then they want six, but if the district office is open and the medical center is open and the one at the end of Main Street is there, would we even need porta potties?
Yeah, I I guess the message would have to be clear. This year, of course, the healing center was not open because it was not ready yet. Um, we would have to ensure that this building was open. I don't believe that the, because the the timing of the day of that particular event, I went back and looked, the visitor center was not open yet. So the lot, so the the building wasn't open. So it'd be something that we would have to discuss through next year, whether or not um we could leave just downstairs open, you know, I get vandalism, that sort of thing. So maybe it's a conversation to have, you know, for next year before we prep. Like, and like I said, as like other communities, they are responsible. I just wanna point out, like, when you participate in car shows, you pay to be a part of the car show. They take in donations to be part of car show. They're having their beverage garden, so they're making money off their beverage garden. So realistically, you know, they they have the funds to to, you know, to pay for their own porta potties. Um, but I do feel that next year with having the healthcare center that open, it will alleviate some. It's more so this end is what it would, the feedback that I got. The one store washing, of course, that was from Matthews. And Wayne said, the store always said, was busy, busy, busy all day long. But I do also know that I spent a lot of time in that car show when I watched a lot of people walking out of there with camping chairs and stuff because they were steamed down by their cars. So it it's just a conversation that we're gonna have to have with the groups as they as they come ahead. But like I said, I did do some some calling around today and I do know like Penta and Vernon and Salmon Arm and Enderby and all those groups unless the municipality is directly involved with the event, it is the event organizers' responsibility to incur those costs.
Yeah, yeah. And uh, the next meeting we have, I'll get you sit in on it and we'll uh we'll go through all the fine, fine details. But I do think that if if we could arrange for this to be open and the far and the medical center to be open and
Signs. I think signs, same thing too, is if
Maybe we have
Good job, like Daryl said, with Daryl's share of those guys with signage. People appreciated the signage that we put in, directed them to where they could park for these events. But you're right, we need to put signage where this is like Washington's here. And I think that would alleviate a lot of the the issues that we had this year.
One of the other big ones that were a problem, as I was in the car show as well, we had a car in the car show. Some people parked on Main Street and there was even a boat and, you know, truck and traders on Main Street. Keep that, you know, get, don't let them park there overnight. And then they're there all day the next day. And you know, you can't it looks stupid when you go to a car show and then you got somebody's boat and car and they're
Some of those vehicles were were actually still parked there on Canada Day.
Yeah, yeah.
Or like using that as a whole, like their whole vacation, they were in the car here. So they never, they never moved their vehicles from the end of Main Street and they were parked up in front of or parked up in between uh Counsel Bailey's restaurant and the I D A. And those vehicles did not wait for a standard five days.
Just one comment about the porta potties. I feel like I I do think the organizers should put up porta potties. I don't think that this should be a facility used for washrooms. We have motion bathrooms in here. And several times they've been plugged and the district will be responsible cleaning those. Whereas porta potties, there's someone else's responsibility, not the district. So back to, I think that it is abilities for the porta potties. And um, yeah, and the parking on Main Street, I really do believe that we need to nip that in the bud as well. Counselor Bailey.
Yeah, um, I I think it went well. I mean, one reason why currently current businesses wouldn't adapt their hours for one day, it's just too damn hard, right? You're you're shifting your whole business model, your scheduling, your your everything else. So in so in our case, yeah, we we wouldn't because it's just not worth the grief, the aggravation, getting a whole new staff team in there, running two shifts to align with basically, you know, the time that 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 the show's going on. I think the only issue that I hadn't, I know I talked to others, was just the July long weekend, having two so close together was the issue. Uh, the car show, I think it was extremely well attended. And I think everyone really liked it. And, you know, overall, it worked for us too because we weren't even open till till three. And and I, like I said, we we, it's a lot of businesses that might not be able to just adapt their hours to take advantage of it, which is totally fine. But I think having multiple closures in one weekend is the issue, right? And if as you get to Canada Day, let's say that's gonna be on a Friday or a Thursday, so you're gonna close that down, then another one is gonna be two days later. That, to me, is the only problematic sticking point. And and I'm sure some of that will be solved as we go forward here, once the bridge gets done and things like that, but
Plans are already for next year not to have Canada Day on Main Street.
Yeah, and that that was just only my my feedback that I know caused some of the businesses anxiety, you know, including myself. But I I thought that people using Main Street and activating it the way we did for the car show and and Canada Day brought people in, brought a certain level of excitement in. And and I think it is definitely a net positive for sure. And it's it's just nice to see the town full. Um, and any of the other stuff, I think you just work on the beats. But yeah, that's the only thing is, and 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 I, the other thing about the other car show, I I think a lot of people felt like, okay, two in July, that doesn't make sense, but I think you're working on that. I do like the idea of using some of these road closures in the shoulder season. Whether we're talking about a June event or a September event, not not when the weather is obviously terrible. Nobody wants to do that. Or we start thinking about a winter event too, right? There is some possibility to get outside of our peak time and and use it to bring the energy level up in town. So anyways, thanks very much, Jamie.
Go ahead, Dean.
Quick comment for counsel. I think it's important to note that now that Jamie has this policy in place, the council established a policy, the planning she'll note, she said, is in January. Unlike this year where we're kind of reacting to things happening. This is happening a long time in advance. So I think that's a really positive. Is this year a bit reactionary in creating the policy? Because we already had things happening. Next year, we're gonna have a lot more client, it'll be an opportunity to look at that in the car shows different types. This is all happening well in advance of next year. It's gonna make events easier and better for next year.
That's a great point.
Yeah, and that's a great idea. And I heard nothing but positive about the the car show on Main Street. It was just amazing. People raving about it. And I think it's, I I think it's a little different than from this year when we had the bike show. And all the bikes and the bike drags on Main Street and smoke was going into people's businesses and their clothes were smelled like smelling like burnt rubber. So I think this is a big shift from from that. And also different demographic, like um, it was more of a, this was more of a family event where people were coming down, husbands and wives and you know, husbands are looking at cars and wives were wandering off shopping or vice versa, you know? So um, I think that, yeah, there's a big shift from having the the bikes on Main Street to a nice classic car show. Anyone else? All right. Thank you, Jamie. Counselor reports. Counselor Rich.
Oh, I got a list here. Uh, Bianca and I attended the Rail Trail Roundtable in Enderby and that was fun and and long and good and we learned lots. Music in the Park, been absolutely fabulous. Wind up with last night, incredible attendance, absolutely, like every I've gone to it, I think I've made four out of the six shows. So shout out to our chamber. I'm in a whole, all the whole hard work there. Farmer's Market, uh, haven't been able to get to as many because I'm working, but I'm like, I spend way more more money than I should. But again, packed, lots of tourists. Everybody's excited. Last one I was at, it was pouring rain and I lined up to buy everything that I spent money on that I didn't need, but it's super awesome to have in my house. So again, shout out to Deb and the Farmer's Market. Uh, and I had someone in town and they said, oh, I heard that's the best farmer's market in Canada. I said, well, actually it is. So shout out to
Canadian renowned.
Also wanna know, uh, make statement, school is starting, so please be very aware when you go through our zones and our kids are gonna be running around like little banshees. So school is starting next week. Uh, and I'm sure that our our SAMP will be slowing everybody down through our spaces. August thirty first is overdose awareness for Canada. So again, please be cognitive. Um, I think everybody, um there's very few people that were not six degrees of separation for overdose and toxic drugs, uh, which takes seven people a day within B C. So everyone here in this room and everyone in B C is touched by that. So that's August thirty first. Um, so please be aware of that.
Thank you. And I think you have a notice sent to change the colors of the circle coming up later tonight.
I'm hoping we're turning the town purple.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair, um, yeah, it's a busy month, I guess. I've I've been, I've been traveling lots, so I haven't been here that much, but uh I went, met with the car show people, I had a meeting with one of the residents on the far side. Keen and a few things, uh, had a great trip on the ferry. The ferry was great, you know. Been on the, well, I've been on the ferry or the rail track one a few times, but um, the ferry was very unique and exciting. Uh, I had a planning and development committee meeting, went really well, uh, lots of development happening in town. So uh, there was a really good update that Nicole did and Dean. So appreciate that. Um, I'll have Bike Park. I was over there this morning at five thirty and
When'd you sleep?
It's amazing. You guys gotta get over there and and get get your bikes up there and go for a ride. But uh, it doesn't, and like I said, it does look narrow in the video, but it's not that narrow. It's a great place to even walk, you know, so uh, they did a great job, uh, you know, did a really good job on it. We still got a little bit of work they gotta do to it. And then, um, just working with our Main Street landscaping team and we're getting project that we're gonna showcase and uh, uh, we've even done a, uh, what do you call those, uh, clips at uh, sign laps, uh, cleanup. And it's, so just, yeah, have a peek at it and we're still working on it. And uh, yeah, so that's all I have to
Excellent. Counselor McCabe.
I don't have anything to report.
Okay.
Even joined the summer.
Good for you.
For you.
Counselor Beach. Oh, thank you. Um, so uh, I have been to most of the farmer's markets as a as a vendor. And and it is amazing. Like, I am so, so impressed with the numbers of people out to that market. And here we were worried, you know, but Friday night.
And she's super excited about painting faces when you walk past.
Well, the face painting is not a rip snorting business, but but I also was able to be there on behalf of the um, society and I could bring, we had tons of plums, so I was trying to again, um, get get the plums off the table. And people were loving the plums and the nectarines and stuff. So we had fruit to give out. So but it was, it was exciting to see how how well it was supported. So good job, Deb. You've really done a, done a thing there. So and I also tried to attend um most of the music in the park uh as well. And awesome, you know, like this the events that we have going here for this little town and just the settings are so incredible. Like, I I just love this town and I've been here for forty years, but it just, I'm so impressed with how all of these things come come together and how we present present our town, our park and our downtown. So I had planned to use the ferry, but that, those plans fell through, so I haven't yet been on the ferry. Uh, attended the planning and development though, and that that was pretty exciting to hear all of the, all of this stuff and and realize that there was even, there was even a couple that that we didn't talk about, you know, in terms of planning. Knowing that there's new plans for housing and that kind of stuff. So just um, just great. I, we're we're doing a good job, I think. Thanks to everybody.
I agree. Bailey.
Yeah, chaired the planning and development committee and um, yeah, if folks haven't been to one lately, uh, come by, anybody is welcome. But counselors, especially if there's, there's something that you're interested in, we always make sure that it's open and counselors can come and participate too. But I think the the story there really is that there is a lot going on. There's a lot of building permits issued. There's more being worked on. There is more interest in the town than certainly I've ever seen. And I've, I've only been here six years, but you know, even according to people that have been here lo- much longer, this is a very heightened period of interest in sick moose. And and you can see it. I think, you know, the farmer's market is indicative of it. I think the amount of people that are coming to the car shows. There's a whole bunch of just proof that sick moose is getting its attention that it deserves. And I think in a very positive way. And and we certainly heard that at the planning and development stuff too. One of these years, I have to get to Music in the Park. We've been a series sponsor for about five years now. I haven't made it. Because I do mostly work in the summer, but uh, it's for for my own businesses, but I I think all of these different things that are going on in sick moose are just adding up to an overall positive feeling uh, in an excellent direction. And I just wanna say thank you to everybody who's involved because it takes so many volunteers and Deb, I don't think sleeps. Gord clearly is at five thirty, running down like a, like a bike park. It makes me feel lazy. But uh, you know, it's an, it's an incredible amount of people that make all this stuff come together. So thanks very much.
Yeah, and I'm just gonna echo that, you know, over the past like twelve years that we've been on council. This community has really, really changed. And right now, it's just ramping up so fast. You know, the developments on Temple and Let Up and, you know, it's it's amazing. And across the street and finishing off the medical center and it's just there is so much to be proud of and um, our community and Daryl and your team, our community looks wonderful. And we should all be so very, very proud to be part of this, part of the community and part of the growth that you just, you're And we should all be so very, very proud to be part of this, part of the community and part of the growth that you just, you're seeing right before your very eyes, right? Um, and hats off to Explore Sycamore's and Carly and all the great work that they're doing over there to make sure that Sycamore's is showcased. So they're doing a great job as well, so we never used to have a, you know, a tourism department, I mean, when I started, when we started, it was. Kelly and I rebranding, and a few of us rebranding Sycamore's, so.
No marketing now.
There was no marketing, so if this has been, uh, amazing. Um, okay, so I attended Cow. Um, on August the seventh, there are some tipping fees that will be increased to lessen the impact of, um, tax on taxpayers. So if any of you have have been through the, um, the minutes, um, the Film Commission was brought to the table, the Okanagan Film Commission. Um, however, it was brought to the next meeting and we did not have a meeting in between. The Film Commission is minimal cost if any cost to us this year because we have money in reserves, so Sycamore's will be. Part of the Okanagan Film Commission with the C S R D and all the other directors. And at that point next year, whenever, if we don't see a, uh, a bonus or positive, we can opt out, so. Uh, minimal cost or actually no cost cuz it is reserves that we're drawing from this year. Um, so there were some, I'll address those tonight, there's some letters from some, uh, residents. Um, regarding, um, beverages and benches and, um, maintenance of the rail trails, so that. Uh, that was brought up at the C S R D meeting on the twenty second. I did reiterate the importance of signs, sooner than later, no trespassing signs. Some carry in, carry out your garbage signs. Um, I don't, you know, I'm not a big fan of garbage cans, uh, right through the the trail and down. People can be responsible like a slider and take your garbage and bring your garbage out, but there should be some, you know, triage, some quick, quick wins with some signage. And so working on that and, um, see how soon we can get that done. Um, but in these letters, there's, there's three different things that people are talking about. They're talking about the Ferry Society, which is the Ferry Society on its own, they're talking about the D O S. And what the D O S is doing for the rail trail, and that's a separate hot button, and then what the C S R D is doing. They're throwing everything into one letter when there are three different pieces, so, um, dressed all of those in the in the meeting as well. Um, the Ferry Society, of course, there was, uh, some notes, I think, in that meeting about how they're gonna carry on, but the Ferry Society is donation and sponsorships only, it's not taxpayers' dollars. So, um, and in the C S R D meeting, which I'll say right now, if you can donate, sponsor, ferry, people are loving it. Um, I think there's, Dean, what did you, can you just tell me the numbers that went across up to now?
So July was nineteen hundred and sixty-five riders on the ferry, August was forty-five hundred and twenty-five.
Insane. So it is a unique feature to Sycamore's and, you know, when we started talking about it, we kinda knew it was gonna be. Uh, Sycamore's Belt solution, so, um. The rail trail, of course, is open and in its infancy, it opened in May and it is as raw as it's ever gonna be. Yes, it needs some maintenance and, um, Spot Scene is, or sorry, the Spot Scene Development Corp is apparently doing the maintenance. Um, the gate that is locked is going to be open once the. Sorry, what's the name of the the fence, the gate coming in?
It's like ballards.
Ballards come in, so, and that should be here any day now. So, um, that's the update on that. Um, so we've got some U B C M coming up for council and we're getting some great response from our ministers and and meetings getting booked, so. Uh, that's amazing. Um. I think that that is. It for me, there's been, yeah, there's been a lot happening. We have, I have a, a meeting with B C Hydro. Coming up, Dean and I have a meeting with B C Hydro coming up here, uh, next week regarding outages, and we're gonna have, uh. A conversation about how they choose the outages and when they choose the outages and that twenty-four hours out. Towards, uh, on Old Town Road and, uh, Canby South Squad, that whole area was out for twenty-four hours, that was like. Um, um, too long, you know? Uh, so we're gonna have a conversation about that. Um, Pure Fiber, I think that everyone is getting their, uh, tell us notices in the mail now. About the fiber coming to town, so make sure that we all get on board with that, because that's gonna be a game changer for our community. Pure Fiber, it's gonna be huge for us, so I think that's, um, something we need to, uh, rally around as well. Okay, that's it for me, and now we're gonna have some public input. So Deb, did you wanna start?
If you bear with me, I decided I didn't feel like being a delegation, so I just wanna give you guys a quick update so you know what's going on. But the one comment before I do my update is if you're looking to try and keep up that grant a bit. A nice K word could, so that would be lovely.
Loving the way.
Actually, we had a garden contest in town last week, I'm not sure if you guys were there. Um, yeah, I kept it pretty low key because I just honestly didn't have a lot of time to deal with it, but we had it by nomination, uh. And we had twelve people got these lovely little best garden selection signs and pictures and stuff, and so. And it was well received, but probably not widely known, but it it went well. Um, the, we, today, we submitted two showcase submissions to community simply, one for the heritage, uh, walking, uh, tour. And one for the art boards at the, uh, Chris Rooms and Dale Crevers that are. Supposed to basically screen commercial properties and give the, you know, support the whole theme of. At the, uh, health centers, so, uh, those were submitted today, um. Updated the art walk because of some of our new, uh, new, uh, awards there and such. Um, the grill gardener thing was was fun, um, I probably shouldn't say this in public, but you've gotta see Ryan Anderson at Nine Marks. He actually moves quickly, so it's. So it was a fun.
Dave.
But it was, it was fun. Uh, the, uh, Farmer's Market, uh, this week is going to be back up to fifty vendors. Um, it's, it's been tricky on the hot dates. People seem to prefer to go to the lake rather than the Farmer's Market that's hot, but we still keep the, the vendors keep coming back, so. Uh, we've only got four left, um, it's ending September nineteenth with the, uh, Fungi Fest. Um, the, uh, Fungi Fest, uh, I haven't had much time to spend on it, I've gotta start ramping up on that, but we are sold out. On our Saturday long walks and there's a fair bit of ticket sales for the rest of it. Um, so it's, it's going well, there's some things I want to do some more with that I'm talking to Carly and I need to talk to the. Chamber about, and, uh, Jamie's comment about the, uh, car show happening in the shoulder month. I've been talking to, uh, Carly about this idea of a stay in play thing the week before the Fungi Fest. With the, uh, pickleball and do kind of an invitational thing and then advertise they can golf, they can do this. Get the hotels going versus everybody at Word Households, um. I think that would go really well with the car show. I'm not convinced that my Fungi Fest people are your car show audience. Well, Carly and I probably talked to you about that and we'll talk some more about it, so, um, that's it.
Awesome. Anyone else? Do we have anyone online that wants, that has their hand up?
We do not.
All right, well. Let's adjourn, there's a recommendation, the county, the whole meeting for August the twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, be adjourned at two thirty-nine. Council Rich. Council Beach, all in favor? Okay, we're good till, we'll take fifteen minutes.